For the city of New Brunswick for March 12th, 2018. We're all ready to go. We have a full board tonight. Let's start with roll call.
Pierre Checo.
Here.
Dale Vickers.
Here.
Claire Barber.
Here.
Chris Delatella.
Here.
John Pachalina.
Here.
Manuel Castaneda.
Here.
Bob Cárca.
Here.
John Pachalina.
Here.
Please see your choice. I'm really honored.
Suzanne Ledgwick.
He's here next month, too.
David Center.
Here.
Jeff Crum.
Here.
Public announcement?
Please be advised that the notice requirement of the Open Public Meetings Act that applied with satisfied the annual notice or sufficient notice of time, place, and conduct of well-planned meetings with the planning board. The city of New Brunswick has been filed with city clerk to place an appropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall, 78 Fire Street, Brunswick, New Jersey, and transmit the official newspapers of the city of Brunswick, and the home of the Tribune and Starbuck.
Stand by, salute to the flag. Ledgwick, just to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Minutes from January 18th.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board received copies of the minutes in their packets. Unless anybody has any changes or additions, a motion to approve will be in order.
Second?
On favor. Post. Sounds good.
Communications and reports. Two resolutions today from the board. The first is the Jersey Avenue Storage LP BP 2017-09. Will you read these, please?
No, please.
Unless there's any changes or additions, members got copies to review. Unless you have any changes, a motion to approve will be in order.
Available to vote on this is Checo, Vickers, Barber, Castaneda, Cárca, and Crum.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
One second. Pierre Checo.
Yes.
Dale Vickers.
Yes.
Claire Barber.
Yes.
Manuel Castaneda.
Yes.
Bob Cárca.
Yes.
Jeff Crum.
Yes.
Number two, the Resnick Brunswick Realty LLC PB 2017-11.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve will be in order unless anybody has any changes or additions. Members received copies to review.
Available to vote on this is Checo, Vickers, Barber, Castaneda, and Crum.
Motion?
A second. Pierre Checo.
Yes.
Dale Vickers.
Yes.
Claire Barber.
Yes.
Manuel Castaneda.
Yes.
Jeff Crum.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And moving on to new business, send you an application for Aldi E. 2018-02 for a site plan and variance application for the construction of an efficient existing grocery store located at 6 Van Dyke Avenue, Lot 596.04, Lot 9.01, zoning district C-6.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Richard Goldstein, counsel for the applicant this evening, appearing before the board, seeking preliminary and final site plan approval and bulk C variances. The application that's before the board this evening, as indicated by your chairman, is located at 6 Van Dyke Avenue. It's an existing developed parcel occupied by my client as an Aldi food market. As you can see from the drawing that is before the board, and I'll identify this as Exhibit A1, it is identified as a landscape plan prepared by the major consulting sheet five of nine. So on Exhibit A1, you will see that the site enjoys a very extensive frontage along Van Dyke Avenue, but a very minimal frontage along Route 27, Somerset Street. The lot is in a regular shaped, triangular shaped lot, and currently there is existing at the site a 16,455 square foot Aldi food market with accessory parking, loading, and signage. This building was constructed following a use variance that was granted by your zoning board in 2006. At the time, the site had a R6 residential zoning designation that since was changed to a C6 highway commercial zone, and the existing and proposed use are permitted uses. The proposal before the board this evening consists of two distinct improvements to the existing building. One is at the corner of the building, this end, and our engineer will provide you with more detail, where we are expanding the building by approximately 901 square feet to increase the floor area of the building itself in an area that is currently part of the loading area. The other area of improvement is at the front door. It's basically an area that is L-shaped, approximately 50 by 50 dimensions, and the proposal at the entry is to really build up the existing entry with Aldi's prototypical tower canopy entrance. It is Aldi's prototype, it is how they brand themselves, and it is an entrance foyer that is specifically designed, as you'll see when we get to the elevation, to hold the signs that are the subject of variance relief that we are seeking this evening. And so there are two variances that we're seeking tonight. The first is with regard to maximum percentage of permitted building coverage. The ordinance permits 15 percent, 16.01 percent currently exists, and we are proposing 16.96 percent. With regard to signage, the site currently has two facade signs. We are proposing to continue to have two facade signs, but the ordinance permits a maximum of 50 square feet per sign. Currently, the signs are 46.9 square feet, and we're proposing that each sign be 75.72 square feet. There's an existing freestanding sign, which is closer to the intersection of Van Dyke and Somerset. That existing sign will not change, other than a change of copy to install Aldi's updated corporate logo. And we're also proposing to upgrade the internal lighting of that sign to LED. This expansion enables the store to enjoy an upgrade so that this store can have the variety of goods that Aldi's current prototype stores offer throughout the country. It allows Aldi to continue its successful operation at this location, and we hope that the board will agree that it's a good plan with minimal relief. I'd like to begin the testimony if I can by calling Jess Anesey.
Can you raise your right hand and state your names, spell your last name for me, please?
Jess Anesey, A-N-E-S-I.
And you sort of alter in this matter?
Yes, I do.
Jess, by whom are you employed?
Was for Aldi Foods for over 38 years. I retired last July, and I came back for 18 more months as a consultant.
So in the 38 years before you became a consultant for Aldi, would you say that you are familiar with the use and the operation of a standard Aldi grocery store?
Yes, I am.
Are you also familiar with this particular location in New Brunswick?
Yes, I am.
Could you very briefly explain to the board the reasons for the proposed addition and upgrade of the store?
Aldi started in 2016, a program of remapping 900 some stores to carry more product lines, buy more items. So all locations are going to have to be expanded and/or relocate somewhere else to be a bigger store. So we're adding on the length here to give us more room for sales floor merchandising.
And when you, if the board were to grant this approval and you expanded the store, would it affect your hours of operation?
It would be the same.
And what impact would it have on your number of employees?
Probably, I currently have 12 employees, there will have 14 probably when we get all done with the increase expected in sales.
So about two additional employees?
Two employees, yes.
And what impact would it have on deliveries to the site?
Probably one more per week.
And what about that trash removal?
Minimal, because we have, now the current dumpster will say where it's at, so very minimal on that.
And will the current dumpster be able to handle any additional trash as a result of this addition?
Yes, most of our trash anyway is recycled by cardboard and plastic, goes back to warehouse and recycled there. So all we had trash for by the dumpster, basically four wood chips and some toy prototype items, so very minimal on that.
I'm going to put on the ISO, but I'll identify as Exhibit A2, and it is called exterior elevation, prepared by APD Engineering, dated January 11, 2017, and the last revision date is April or February 27, 2018.
Counsel, what you marked as A1 does not appear to be any different than what was provided in the packet, and assuming A2 is also?
That is correct. They're both consistent with materials that were previously submitted.
So they're just being identified as modification purposes only?
Yes, thank you. Jess, does this elevation drawing, A2, identify accurately the appearance of this building as it's projected after construction?
Yes, it does.
And this plan identifies in the upper left corner, under the front elevation, Aldi's prototypical entry tower that's proposed to be constructed with one sign, and on the right-hand side, identified as the left elevation, is the other side of the prototypical entry tower with a second facade sign. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And are the facade signs that are proposed by this application consistent with Aldi's prototype signage?
Yeah, just like I said, last year, two signs, same building near Roseville, also in New Jersey, exactly like this, so.
And is, are they consistent in terms of identifying Aldi's new corporate logo and also consistent with regard to size?
Yes.
And is it correct that the redesign of the entry to the Aldi store that is proposed is also Aldi's consistent branding of its entry to all of its new stores?
Yes, sir.
And is that tower design actually designed and constructed to accommodate these particular signs?
Yes, this tower feature here was designed in 2015, the fall, to start, be installed in 2016, and that later stands for 2016 January.
And lastly, Jess, there was a comment in one of the review letters asking if Aldi would agree to provide low-level landscaping at the base of the freestanding sign, and is that something that Aldi would agree to do?
Who complied with the FPS.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions of this witness. Now I'll call my next witness, Ed Caballero.
Can you raise your right hand and state your names, spell your last name for me, please?
Edwin Caballero, C-A-B-A-L-L-E-R-O.
And you sort of alter in this matter?
I do.
Ed, could you very briefly provide the board with a summary of your professional qualifications and background?
Yes, I have a Bachelor of Science, a Bachelor of Science from Civil Engineering from the New Jersey Institute of Technology from 1979. I'm a professional licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey since 1993. I have over 30 years of experience preparing site plans and subdivisions, and I have testified before numerous courts. Your honor, accepted, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ed, are you familiar with both the plan that is before the board this evening and with the site?
Yes, I am.
And would you provide the board with just a very brief overview of the improvements to the site that are proposed by this application and the background of the application?
All righty. Just to give the board some reference, Route 78, I'm sorry, Route 27 is on the northerly side of the property, or the left side of the sheet. Van Dyke Avenue, which is a municipal roadway, is located on the easterly, or the top section of the sheet. Zebra Way, also a municipal roadway, is located on the southerly, or the right side of the exhibit, and we have an existing apartment complex on the westerly side, or the bottom side of the site plan. We are before the board for preliminary and final site plan approval for Lot 9.01, Lot 596.04. This site is located in a highway commercial C6 zone, which permits retail food stores. The total tract area for the parcel is 2.3 acres. Currently on the site is an existing Aldi store building. It has 16,102 square feet, and there's currently 89 parking spaces on site. We are proposing a minor 901 square foot building expansion, and that expansion is located in the existing loading dock area. That would bring the building of this area to 17,003 square feet. We are also proposing to renovate the northerly corner of the existing building with a new two-tiered tower. The maximum proposed height for the building is 24.5 feet, where 40 feet is allowed by the zoning ordinance. The maximum floor area ratio is 0.1696, where 1.25 is allowed by the ordinance. We are requesting a variance for that, and I will go through additional testimony for the warrant of that variance later on in my presentation. The maximum impervious coverage for the site is actually decreased from 74.64 percent down to 73.93 percent, where 80 percent is allowed by the ordinance. The required number of parking spaces for this site is 85 spaces. That's one parking space for every 200 gross floor area. We are providing 87 parking spaces, including four handicap spaces on site. Access off the site is from Van Dyke Avenue. The curb entrance is 30 feet width, and there is an additional existing entrance drive off of Zebra Way, and that entrance drive is also 30 feet wide. All of the other access aisles in the parking lot are 24 foot wide, and our proposed parking spaces are 9 by 20 parking spaces. Off of the apartment complex on the west side of the site, we are proposing three accesses through a proposed six-foot-high vinyl solid fence. Currently, there is an existing six-foot-high wooden fence. We're going to remove that fence and put a solid fence in its place. And that fence is basically going to be located about two foot off of the property line. With regards to stormwater management, we have an existing detention basin on site. That detention basin is located between the existing building and the northerly property line of Zebra Way. Basically, since we have decreased the maximum impervious coverage on site, the basin still has the capacity in order to handle, handle the flow from the project. None of the other utilities for the site have changed based on our proposed improvements. With regards to landscaping, landscaping has been updated. In order to decrease the impervious coverage, on the north side of the parking lot, we have removed four existing parking spaces, and in that place, we added 17 seagreen junipers and two red maples, and that is to provide additional screening of the parking lot from Route 27. In addition, we have a combination of evergreen screenings and red maples that we are proposing along the westerly property line, and that's basically to fill up some gaps in the existing landscape along that, along that line. We have also added evergreens along the westerly side of the loading dock area in order to screen the loading dock area from view. And finally, we have also added some shrubbery along Van Dyke Avenue, and again, that's in order to fill in some spots or some holes to enhance the landscape. With regards to the lighting, all proposed light fixtures are full cutoff fixture types mounted horizontally to the ground. We are proposing a Cree light-type fixture that has a maximum mounting height of 29 feet. The wall-mounted fixtures are 45-watt LED lamps, and the light-mounted fixtures are 86-watt LED lamps. We currently on the site have, are proposing 11 wall-mounted fixtures. We have four recessed light fixtures within the soffit to the proposed renovation in the northerly corner of the site, of the building. We have eight single pole-mounted fixtures within the parking lot, and we have one quad pole-mounted fixture, and again, six existing cobra head fixtures all within the parking lot. The poles would be a four-inch square, a square pole with a light brown finish. With regards to signage, under Ordinance Section 17.06.060, the ordinance allows one sign per facade visible from the highway. There are two existing signs mounted on the building. One is mounted on the north side of the building along Route 27, and the other sign is on the easterly side of the building along Van Dyke Avenue. These signs will be updated with an internal light within the sign. Another section of the same part of the ordinance permits one square foot of sign area per one, per one foot width of front facade with a maximum area of 50 square feet. Based on that requirement, we could be allowed 173 square feet and 93 square feet. The ordinance basically allows a maximum of 50 square feet. We are proposing a standard Aldi sign, which has an area of 75.72 square feet, and therefore we're requesting a variance from that section of the ordinance as well. There is an existing freestanding sign with the Aldi logo, and it's basically located on the north side of the end of the parking lot, just before Somerset, Somerset Street, Route 27. With regards to permits, we have to obtain permits from Middlesex County Planning Board, from the Freehold Soil Conservation District, and from the Delaware and Maritton Commout Commission, and as well as the city fire department, the border sewer department. With regards to variances, we are requesting a variance from the bulk zoning requirements for maximum building coverage. The C6 zone allows a maximum building coverage of 15 percent, and we are proposing 16.96 percent. The expansion is minor in nature and intends to increase the number of items sold within the store in order to keep the store competitive. The increase in the building coverage helps the functionality of the building and provides the community with better service. We also had offset the building increase by reducing the impervious coverage on site from 74.64 percent down to 73.93 percent. We also have a number of waivers on the site. We have six pre-existing non-conforming conditions on site. Section 11.4, the maximum 0.5-foot candles required at the property line. The existing conditions show 1.8-foot candle along the westerly property line adjacent to basically the apartments, and again, this is a pre-existing non-conforming condition. Our improvements have no, no impact on what's currently there. Section 12.6.1B, a minimum of one tree per five parking spaces. Again, this is a pre-existing non-conforming condition. We have enhanced the landscaping throughout the site, but we still did not meet that particular section of the ordinance, and we request a waiver from that. Section 12.6.2, base of all the building sides to have foundations plantings. The existing building doesn't have any of the foundation plantings. For most of the building, it is either screened by the existing fence on the south side and on the west side, and basically has sidewalk, basically along its front, so there is no foundation plantings there. From section 12.8.3, small letter B, buffer width between non-residential use and residential use. The existing parking lot was previously approved with a five-foot landscaping buffer to, to the residence, the apartment complex, basically to the west, where 10-foot is required by ordinance. This again is another pre-existing non-conforming condition. We have again attempted to enhance that by adding additional landscaping in certain segments where landscaping was missing along the westerly property line. Section 12.8.3, small B, buffer width, buffer width between parking lots and residential use. Again, the existing parking lot was previously approved with a five-foot landscaping buffer to the residential use, where 10, 10-foot is required. And lastly, section 12.8.3, small C, the height of screening for the loading dock shall be 10 feet in height. We have, we have added a six-foot-high chain link fence along the loading dock area. We have included slats inside the chain link fence to help screen the loading dock area, and then we've also added 15 abreviate behind the fence in order to provide additional screening. Go through the checklist items? Yes, if you would. Okay. We had some waivers from the site plan application checklist. Item number three was a site logistics plan. The site logistics plan would be submitted by the contractor to the city prior to construction. Item number nine was a traffic impact statement. We have requested a waiver from that. The proposed improvements are basically minimal, and they really don't generate any additional traffic. Item number 10, the environmental impact statement. We requested a waiver from that as the site is fully developed. Item number 11, submission of a recycling plan. The proposed improvements again are minimal, and we don't anticipate any increase in generation of solid waste or recyclables. Item number 12, drainage calculations. We requested a waiver from that as previously stated. We have reduced the impervious coverage on site and the basin when storm sewer system can handle the flow. And lastly was item number J, a centerline distance of existing streets butting the property line to the nearest intersection with any other public street. We requested a waiver from that. We're basically at two intersections.
And then just one last question. Have you reviewed both the updated review letter from Mr. Carley dated March, I think it's today's date, March? from Mr. Carley dated March, I think it's today's date, March, well, March, no, dated March 9 and also Mr. Bignell's letter of March 5?
Yes, I have.
And are the terms and conditions of those letters acceptable to the applicant?
Yes, they are.
I don't have anything further of this witness.
Mr. Cavalero, clarify something for me. Did you testify that the foot candle, the light essentially that emanates from the property would not change despite the increase of the signage or fix of the facade? Could all these signs, it's increasing by about 50%? Are you saying that that is not going to impact the amount of light that's projected from, from the building and property? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. And the reason it is because we are, we are proposing a six-foot-high solid fence along that westerly property line and that will cut off some of the foot candles coming over the, over the site to the apartments.
Is there any sense of whether or not that would impact anybody living on a higher floor in the apartments?
I don't believe it would impact anyone on the higher floors. The, the lighting is at 29 feet, the ordinance requirement.
Right here, I do have a variance for the size of the sign. I just want to make sure that I understand that the impact of some traditional size of light is not going to impact the, the majority of residents. That would be something I would understand how it would.
And also just.
About the sign, the lighting of the sign.
The signs, yes, all the signs. Yeah, I'd also just point out that, that the location, the signs are at the far easterly end of the site and the residential property is on the westerly end of the site.
So both are on, on the facade on the high.
Yeah, but we also, yeah, one is on this facade facing east out to Van Dyke and the other is on this facade facing, I guess that's north out towards Somerset.
And are there no budding property owners who would, I assume that they could apply to this, so I guess that would be.
Yeah, the, the only other, other than the residences over here, at least based on my inspection when I visited the site today, is on the opposite side of Van Dyke Avenue, there is the Coach Park and Ride parking lot. So there's nobody that's living there and it's, it's, you know, a parking lot. I don't know that, I don't know that the lighting from the signs would emit enough light to affect anything on the opposite side of Van Dyke Avenue, but if it did, it's a commercial use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the other sign faces out towards Route 27, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Question about the landscaping. You've got a lot of arborvitae plantings, right? Still a lot of those. Are you going to be taking a lot of those out and replacing with arborvitae or just supplementing it with, with arborvitae? We were supplementing the areas that are basically open. How, how come arborvitae, you know, it's a, it doesn't hold up to the drought very well, tends to die in drought conditions and you've seen what it looks like out there now after the storm that last week? They're all over the place. It's just kind of, I'm just wondering why, you know, why that, why that shrub? Basically, we were maintaining with the same shrubbery that was there. There should be a, a program in place where if one of these arborvitae dies or something, it would be replaced.
And if there's a concern with regard to the selection of the type of plantings, we'd be happy to work with your professionals to make sure that they're satisfied with the nature of the plantings to be installed on site.
I'm not a professional on that because I just, I know the nature of the tree and, and what happens to it in storms and droughts. And I go out there now and one of those things is standing up. They're all over the place. And, you know, they take, they don't do well in the storms at all. So it looks pretty awful out there now. You know, they'll come back to some extent. They're not going to die, but they don't look particularly good. I'm just wondering why. And I know the tree is used extensively, or he uses it, but they're also constantly dying to get replaced, so.
Yeah, I think the goal was that we were trying to be consistent with what was already there. But as I said, there's no reason that we're bound by that. If there's a, a better, a better species that your professionals think would work there, we're open to that discussion.
My only concern where they're putting them is the, the width of the planted area. A wider evergreen is not going to survive. They're probably less, less so than the arborvitae.
I know.
The arborvitae are, they, they grow fast. That's one reason why I guess they like them and they, they, they go, they go straight up.
Yeah, they make a solid screen.
Yeah.
Next to.
If they maintain it, they should be okay, but they got to maintain it. Like you said, they're not maintaining it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a weapon, it's a weapon of the tree. Yeah, it needs to be water.
But a deer will be eating them too. That's the only thing, there's deer.
I don't think deer, I don't think you got to, it's deer breath. Just a comment.
I have no other witnesses, thank you.
Any questions for the public? Try to raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last name, please.
Charles Cradaville, K.R.A.T.O.V.I.L.
And you swear to the holy business matter?
Yes, sir. Good evening, members of the board. Charles Cradaville, New Brunswick. I'm there in New Brunswick today. As you know, I get the opportunity to speak tonight. Had hopefully a constructive suggestion, but first a couple of questions. Does the store offer any delivery?
Yes.
Do you do delivery or is it all just walk-in business?
No, people off-gas.
Okay. Do you offer like some of the other stores in New Brunswick do, where if you spend a certain amount, they'll drive you home at least?
No.
Okay. I'd like to point out for the record, there is a county bus route, the M5, that actually cuts through your parking lot here. They come in off Zebra Way, goes usually like here and then out here and then makes a stop here. And I was just, you know, it's like no more than twice an hour, but I know a lot of people ride it and a lot of people do probably use it to get to and from your store and wanted to see if, would the developer be open to putting up some kind of shelter to make us a, a place for people to wait while they're waiting to catch this show?
Yeah, we could do that. Maybe the area that's already there is there now. Stops around there, the bus stops.
It stops there. I don't know if that's necessarily the wisest place for it to stop, but if you work with the county, maybe they could even, you know, maybe it could stop right at the front door or something. But I would think that would help improve ridership on the route and also help you to get business.
We'd consider that, work out.
We'd be happy to contact the county and have that discussion.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Any other public comments?
Chairman, if the board seeks to make a positive recommendation on this, suggest the following conditions. Compliance in terms of DNR Engineering Board dated March 9, 2018. Submission of all necessary easements and/or cross-access agreements for review and approval by the Order Attorney and the City Engineer prior to filing a same. Pay in a site performance bond amount to review and approve by the City Engineer. Submission of site inspection escrow deposit for engineering inspection fees amount to be calculated pursuant to 1624160. Pay in all water and sewer connection fees pursuant to 1304 and 1308. Issuance of a road opening permit from the City Engineer required. Compliance with the terms of the Bignell Consulting Group report dated March 5, 2018. Plenty of U.S. go funding for all anticipated post-approval reviews. Paying for any other fees due to the city of New Brunswick related to development or use of the project. Paying for all outstanding taxes and water and sewer fees. Middlesex County Planning Board approval or waiver. DNR Canal Commission approval or waiver for gilded soil. Conservation District approval or waiver. Submit engineering site plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memos or plan amendments offered at the hearing. Submit architectural plans to comply with any changes required by the planning or engineering memo or plan amendments offered at a hearing. And all utilities and other site maintenance will be maintained by the outpouring of soil expense. All on-site utilities to be constructed underground, all temporary enclosures in public driveway shall require City Council approval. All construction stations shall be done on-site and was in enclosure allowing the same in public driveway as approved by City Council. Streets should be kept clean of sediment and debris. The outpouring shall cause the streets to be cleaned if directed to do so by the Director of Public Works. Tracking patch reinstalls all construction exits replaced on damaged streets covered by sidewalk paths for the direction of the City Engineer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Peter Checo.
Yes.
Dale Hickers.
Yes.
Byron Barber.
Yes.
Chris Stellatello.
Yes.
John Petrolino.
Yes.
Daniel Castaneda.
Yes.
Bob Carnigan.
Yes.
David Tener.
Yes.
Jeff Crum.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Other matters of interest to the public? All right. Thank you. For your adjournment. Motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry. Motion to adjourn. I'm too excited.
Motion to adjourn.